And tutoring and bringing up levels for retaking or taking tests, that sort of thing. And I've been, since I've been here, I've seen how many of these supplemental service providers there are, and I'm just wondering, is there, I know you've done all the review in the department, but are there particular requirements or ways in which all of these people, applicants, and these, that we approve, provide these after-school programs? Is there a format that they must follow?
A specific program format, or there's the application with the criteria that the board approved that they have to meet. Specific program format, I think you get a whole host from online to one-on-one to small group tutoring. So, and then there's also a part of it, and tomorrow, I think, we're going to talk about the regs for supplemental service providers. But that will also, you know, I kind of lost my train of thought. You can tell I'm not used to supplemental service providers in this way. What it does is, that'll, I think the regs will help clarify what we're doing, but, and it includes an evaluation.
Well, that's, I guess that's what I'm getting to, is that I think this is a huge growth industry, if you will, and as I have been faced with more and more of these that have come before us, I'm just wondering how it is that we are reading these applications, how we're approving these particular programs, then how do we evaluate them? If they are successful, and then how are we using them as models for other areas to do this? Because I don't know, but you probably could tell me how many there are in this state.
Yes. Right now, with these approved, there'll be 249.
Right. That's a huge industry already.
Ruth, you're absolutely correct, and this is an area that will grow due to NCLB. So, it's something we want to monitor carefully and have criteria, and what we're calling in item number 45 tomorrow, I believe, is the demonstrated record of effectiveness. So, I'm right there with you, absolutely, and we'll be addressing this tomorrow.
I have some notes on that for tomorrow, too. Okay.
Okay, is that all right?
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much.
But it's just a concern.
Okay.
And that is shared. All right.
Do you want to?
Need a motion?
Yes, please. No other comments? Motion. Ruth, make the motion. Do we have a second?
No.
Okay, second by read, all those in favor. No opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, item 15 is withdrawn, and we're on to item 16.
And how do you evaluate all of these actually being? It's me. I'm now persistently dangerous, so.
I know.
One thing into the next. You have before you today the proposed, okay, we'll talk later about that. All right. You have before you today proposed languages to the regulations on persistently dangerous schools, and since the last State Board of Education meeting, there was a 15-day public comment period on the proposed regulations, and we got comments back from four entities, and they were basically concerned with two things. One was that including non-student firearm violations in the definition would require additional data collection work on their part, and also, they felt that it was unfair for schools to be responsible for non-student violations. The second comment that came in was that reporting non-student violations at all school-sponsored activities was unfair because a school doesn't have any control over security at public venues or away sporting events. So, we addressed the second concern that came in by revising the definition of school-sponsored activity, and you can see on page three of the proposed regs, lines 12 and 13, that we've defined school-sponsored activity to any event that's actually on the grounds of the school district. So, it's not if they're out on a field trip or out away in the community somewhere, it would be actually on the school campus, and that takes care of that concern. So.
Where, what, excuse me, what line is it that talks about the cost to keep track of outsiders coming in to the school? What line number is that?
Let's see.
Chuck?
I don't, I don't know if it's the, the cost is on a line. It was, it was a comment that came in that they thought that it would, it would be a mandated cost really for them to go through, go and keep track and monitor this kind of, and set up this kind of a system.
It's discussed in the board item itself rather than.
Right. It's not in the regs.
It's not in the regs.
Okay, no. And, and the CDE staff looked at a cost analysis and didn't think that it added any additional cost, but we don't know if others would disagree with that.
Well, I, I know that, my note to myself on this item was that I would prefer that there is an inclusion of that rather than leaving it out. I, I don't see where that.
Okay, we can do that.
If that's, if that's possible, because I think that that's, it says here, I think it's down on public perception, is that what, that we're talking about? It says there's one remaining issue, the inclusion or exclusion, and the one thing we had to discuss was whether or not issue, it supports the exclusion of the reporting of the non-student firearm, and issue three supports the inclusion, and I'm just saying that I am in favor of inclusion of the reporting of non-student firearm violations.
Right. Right, and, and that is included in these regs. It would be included, it would be counted, it would be part of the reporting.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, the only changes that we had here at this particular one were revising the definition for school-sponsored activity to be right there on the school site. So, it is inclusive.
Any other questions or comments? No? Okay. I have, the motion to, would be as follows. Approve the stack, staff recommendations with minor technical modifications that may be identified and incorporated by staff, subject to the approval of the executive director of the State Board, and with a clarification that the regulations be brought back to the board in January 2005 only if objections to the, visions to the regulations are received during the 15-day public comment period. So, who would like to make that motion? Suzanne. Seconded by Ricky. Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? No? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item 17.
Bill Vacey, Director of Professional Development. In September, you, you approved a process for reading first districts to apply, to be funded, to, to start a special education referral reduction program. And, and this, this, an important part of that item is what materials would be appropriate to be used. And so, in this, in this item, you'd be approving some materials. We went through, the main item that you received in your regular packet outlined the process. We had a Phase One, which was a review by Oregon and Florida Federal Reading Assistance Centers, and Phase Two was a review by our California C-TAC for alignment with standards and to make sure that there was sufficient repetition practice and review for the materials to be effective. The last minute item, that the blue item, includes a table that outlines all the materials that have been reviewed to date. You'll notice that they're split across the various domains, and so, there might be not applicable, the particular materials don't have that section, or they might say no pass Phase One. So, they, they didn't score well enough in either the Oregon or the Florida review to move on to Phase Two, and the no pass Phase Two says they don't include enough materials related to our standards to be approved. We included the web addresses for information if, if districts want to look and get some additional information, because there are actually some rankings within the Florida and Oregon pieces. The department recommends that the programs in the skilled domains that receive the plus be approved for use in reading first programs. These will augment the materials already included in the reading first plan. We have contacted every publisher who received a passing score by either Florida or Oregon to let them know that they would be eligible for a Phase Two review, and we will likely to have some additional materials if other publishers submit the materials to C-TAC for review. So, this may come back for some augmentations in January.
Okay. Thank you very much, Bill.
Sure.
And, so, you have a motion? Anyone? Joe? Seconded by Glee. All those in favor? All those opposed? I believe the motion passes unanimously. I had, I saw a hand over there. Okay. All right. Okay, now moving on to item 19. Advisory Commission on Special Education, a report on activities. And this will, I'm looking forward to your report, and I'm looking forward to being brief as well. Thank you. Only because we are so far behind.
I understand. Good afternoon. My name is Jim Woodhead. I'm a member of the Advisory Commission on Special Education. One of the frustrations of being an advisory commission is that there are people in the world who feel perfectly free not to take our advice. But there is good news. First of all, we have three new members on the commission appointed by the governor. They are Deborah Ann Corky-Corman, Umberto Guzman, and Michael L. Hardman, and we have met with these folks twice, and they are wonderful. Welcome additions to the commission, and we know that the wheels of government move in mysterious ways, but I know that some of you interceded on our behalf in order to move this along, and we appreciate your support. Also, at our September meeting, Janine Martino was in attendance, and she stayed for the duration, and I can't tell you what a lift that gives to us in the special education With respect to the high school exam, exit exam, the matter now seems to be in the 964 advisory group's hands, but I would like to remind the board that the clinical trials are really in. Eighty percent of students with disabilities do not pass this test and are not likely to do so in the immediate future. Mr. Fisher characterized the reaction to the high school exit exam as a firestorm. I would suggest that it's a nuclear explosion in the special education community, and I remind you that there is a virtual army of advocates and attorneys out there who are very familiar with the courthouse and special education law. Moving beyond the high school diploma, the question of transition for students with disabilities to the world of work is problematic at best. We know that 24 to 30 percent of students with disabilities only are currently employed two years after graduation. We also know that Project Workability is one of the better programs to help students with disabilities, and we would encourage your support for that. The commission is looking for best practices and exemplary programs in the area of transition to the world of work and post-secondary education. Towards that end, we are creating an award which will reinforce positive programs and hopefully create a base of information which can be replicated and duplicated throughout the state. Another critical area that I'm sure you have been aware of for a long time is the critical shortage of teachers for special education classes. Many districts simply cannot find speech pathologists to work in the schools. Thirty to forty, 30 percent of individuals who are currently doing special education classrooms are doing so on an emergency permit. Exacerbating that shortage is the no child left behind, highly qualified teacher, and subject competency issues which are coming down the pipe. However, the Institutes of Higher Education Task Force on the recruitment, preparation, and retention of special education teachers appears to be actually chipping away at this problem and making some progress. So, those are our areas of focus for this year. Improvement of the, the number of highly qualified special education teachers and the issue of transition, and we thank you for your support, and we, we would like to remind you that students with disabilities need your support now more than ever.
Thank you very much.
And I hope that was not excessive.
No, that was a wonderful talk that you brought us up to speed in what you're doing. Thank you, Mr. Woodhead. Okay, we're now moving on to the consent. Oh, and I'd like to make one announcement. Item 28 will be heard tomorrow, not today. Okay. On to consent, and under item 20, delete the Marin County Office of Education from the list of schools recommended for gate funding, and under item 21, authorize the executive director to approve any necessary minor technical changes. I'd like to act on this as a group. Does anyone want to discuss, pull anything out of this prior to voting? Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, items 20 through 25, and 33 and 34. So, take a minute and take a look at that. Let me know.
And what was the last one?
Thirty-four. Items 20 through 25, 33 and 34.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Janine? Ruth, do you need another minute? You all right?
No, fine.
Okay. Move staff recommendation under items 20 through 25 and 33 and 34, with corrections as noted, to 20 and 21. Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Nope? Motion passes. Okay. Item 26, IIUSP. Wendy Harris, thank you.
Thank you, President Green, Senator O'Connell, members of the board. Item 26, on to IIUSP. First, just one good piece of news. I wanted to just let you know that post the October 28 release of API, we have over 650 IIUSP schools that have exited from all three cohorts, so that's a little bit over than half, and we expect many more to exit. Just wanted to start with some good news here.
Was it 60, Wendy? Six-oh?
Six hundred and fifty. Over 650.
Oh, great.
Out of 1,290-ish.
Okay.
But schools continue to exit each year, put on watch, they'll make their growth targets, they'll exit, so it's a little bit of good news. However, item 26.
Can't we stop there?
Proposes to add a total of 19 schools from all three cohorts to the existing list, and these schools fail to make significant growth and are subject to the state monitoring provisions. On the last-minute item, if you start with Attachment Two, that table lists 10 schools that do not have a valid API, and when we applied the alternative criteria for demonstrating significant growth, they failed to meet those criteria. So, we're requesting that they get added to the list. And then, Attachment Three has nine additional schools that, as a result of the API release on the October 28th, could not demonstrate significant growth. One of these particular schools, Jordan Senior High School in Los Angeles, does not have a valid API, but that school could not meet the test of the alternative criteria, so that's why they're on the list. So, we're asking actually for two actions here. The first is to designate these 19 schools as state-monitored, assigning a state, and allowing the local governing board to retain the legal rights, duties, and responsibilities with respect to the school. And then, secondly, one school that was state-monitored in September, Williamson Elementary School in Folsom, Cordova, actually ended up making significant growth as determined by the later API data releases. So, we're asking that you take action to remove it from its state monitoring status as designated in September, because they made significant growth. So, those are the two action requests. And that, I'm sorry, that that latter school will be put on watch.
Okay. I'm just checking on the language part of this.
Okay.
Okay. All right. May I have a motion to move the staff recommendations? Joe? And second, anyone? Glee? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, Wendy.
Okay. Item 27 presents an expenditure plan for your approval which identifies both the state and federal funds required to support the state process for those 19 schools.
I'm sorry, you had two speakers on 26.
Okay. I'm, so, I apologize. I've not been good on the public speaker today, and Deborah's been keeping track of me.
And I'm sorry.
So, I do apologize to the speakers.
I'm Stephen Rhodes, represent the urban school districts, and the last time I testified, I urged the board to have maximum flexibility in determining these schools because they're important decisions, you want to make sure you get it right, and because you want to make sure you focus the resources at the schools that need it. But I'm also a little critical of the process. At that last meeting, you approved 73 schools for state schools, and that list wasn't made available until that day of the meeting. And the public, the teachers, the unions, parents, and so forth have no, no knowledge that these schools are being put up until after the fact. You've also done that a little bit today because the Attachment Three, the one, two, three, four, five, six, eight, nine, nine schools or 10 schools on that list, this is the first time the public has seen them. And, and, and I would question some of these decisions. I would question Bear Flag Elementary. It, it had a three-year growth of 56 points. You know, you emphasized the growth a lot, okay, when we talk about no child left behind and so forth, you ought to take a look at the growth. Well, I would urge you to take a look, when you do these decisions, at the growth of these school districts. Average yearly growth of 18 points. The, in Adgewater, the Peggy Heller had a average growth of 10 points per year. And Jordan in LA went up, the first year, 23, went up 16, and then we have invalid API scores. We won't find the reasons for these invalid API scores until January, if then. So, we don't know if it was once, you know, just missing a testing require, you know, a number of kids taking a test, or whether they went down or up, and I would just.
That's two minutes.
I will stop then. The, the last thing I want to bring up is the timing on all of this. You're taking these schools, they, and even the ones that you approved the last time, they haven't, I don't think, received formal notification from the department. I don't think checks have been cut. And now, these schools have to go out and spend money on a outside evaluator, which is okay, and they get $150, but a lot of these are year-round schools. They're already through most of the process. The other schools that you're going to determine, they won't know about this until January. And, and so, you're asking them to do this and do it in a very short period of time. What you might want to think about is maybe having their first year on the state team be effective July 1st, where the school then could really do a good job and have the time to do a good job, and so, that first year is really the first year of the state team, because I think what we're all interested in here is really making sure these schools succeed and giving them the best opportunity. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. May I have staff comment, whether it's Wendy or Sue, on the notification issue, please? And the timing of this?
Yeah, actually, we have talked to every district, and before we prepared the last-minute item, we made sure that the district was well aware of its status, so we have communicated with each district. And then, on the issue of timing or delaying the state process, I don't have the ed code in front of me, but once you make your decision today, it starts, I believe, a 90-day process of contracting with the team, having the team do its initial work, and so forth. So, it's tight, but the districts and schools up till now have been able to, to make that process. And then, finally, actually, this is what, the third year that we've been doing this. The first year, we started in March or April. Last year, we started in November. This year, we started in September, so I feel like we're going in the right direction in terms of starting the process earlier.
So, every school has been notified?
Yeah, yes.
Of the results?
Yes.
Okay. So, the time generally between when the results come out and when they're notified is?
Right, as we're preparing the board items in the last minute.
Right. Okay. So, okay. You characterize that as how, how much time generally before?
Well, the group of schools without the valid APIs are actually a subset of a chart of schools that were presented in the September board item that you agreed should be held until we could apply those alternative criteria.
Okay.
So, actually, those, I believe, all have been up since September. Then, the others were identified initially in the October 28 data release, so there is a very short time between October 28th and today.
And that's why we get the last-minute memo in this list?
Exactly.
Okay. Well, that makes sense. Okay.
One more speaker.
Was there another public speaker? Thank you.
I'd like to give a particular example, if you don't mind. Take Jordan Elementary, or Jordan High School in LA.
If you can make it very, very quick, please.
The district knew about it yesterday. The school wasn't notified. The district was notified.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Rose, and I would say that there needs to be responsibility by all involved here. Welcome.
Hello. Peggy Barber, Los Angeles Unified. I wanted to express to you mainly our frustrations with what happens, and we know that a lot of it is, is a combination of situations with code, with, you know, with the statute, with regulations, with everything else. So, it's, it's just kind of tough to run this process the way it is running. You know, our schools have a real concern because of the conflict between API scores and AYP. We have schools that are being sated that made AYP. We have schools that have very, very high APIs, schools approaching 700 that are being sated, and it doesn't seem that that's a good use of the state's money to spend that much money on schools that are really that well-performing, that high-performing. And we do know, though, that it's because that's what the law says, but maybe there need to be some changes. Also, we, we would like to see some kind of a safe harbor. There are schools, for instance, Chatsworth High School that you did approve for a state in September, has 44 percent of their students that are proficient, and that's very, very good for a high school, and yet, they're being sated because they had invalid API, and they, they had had some very, very high gains a few years, and then they have a, you know, one year of a loss, and then an invalid API in that whole span, and they get a state. We also have some concerns about the, the timing, again, as Steve suggested. Some schools were identified in September, some again in November, there probably will be others in January. It does make it difficult for those schools, and, you know, you, you did hear that the schools implement it, or the districts do come through. We do, but it's very difficult, extremely difficult, because we've already gone through the process with the schools you approved in September. They've contracted with the County Office of Education. They're in the process already of doing their academic program surveys, and they're really on the road. Now, these two new schools that we just found out about yesterday will have to start the process all over again. That means pulling together the whole team, duplicating everything that's already been done, and very likely, there will be other schools in January. So, it's, it's very, very wasteful of the time and inefficient. The final thing I want to tell you is that we've been very, very pleased with the support that we've received from department staff, particularly Jeff Zettel and Jenny, Jenny Singh. They've been very, very helpful. They're doing the best they can with what they've been given, and what we would recommend more than anything else is to see if we can't just take a look at the entire process, all of the accountability programs, and I know that legislation has been proposed that would combine them, but it still is, is very, very complex, and there needs to be an easier way, a more transparent way, and something that works a little better and doesn't have people constantly scrambling.
Right. Thank you for sharing that with us, and I, I think the frustration, we all have a little bit of frustration in terms of melding those two accountability systems and the timeline in this, and perhaps staff could talk with the executive director, and I don't know if there's some movement, some, some way we could accommodate districts in this regard. It is complicated, and I look forward to a future discussion about it at some point, and maybe you can help us with that, Wendy.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. We are on then item 27, and Deborah, do we have any public speakers? Just, I would just want to ask that question.
I'm, I'm sorry, we don't on 27.
Okay, good. Thank you. Please, Wendy. On 27, or do we have anything else?
I'm just, we're presenting the expenditure plan for your approval.
Very simple. Okay, do we have a motion to move staff recommendation? Ricky, second. Glee, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on.
Okay, item 29, moving to the high-priority schools. We began discussing this in September, and just to remind you what the law says, the statute says any high-priority school that hasn't met its growth targets for each of the first two years shall be subject.
All right, moving on.
Okay, item twenty-nine, moving to the high-priority schools. We began discussing this in September. And just to remind you what the law says, the statute says any high-priority school that hasn't met its growth targets for each of the first two years shall be subject to a review by the board and you have to look at the school's progress. And then the statute further goes on to permit the superintendent with the board's approval to take appropriate action for corrective assistance. So you had a very long discussion in September and you asked us to come back with some information post-API data release on these schools. Little good news, a hundred and twenty high-priority schools actually met all of their growth targets for both years, all the subgroups and overall. So that's good. And then no school went backwards or had negative growth both years. So on your last-minute memorandum, in table one, you have two years of information on a hundred and thirty-four schools that made significant growth, one or the other or both years, but of course failed to meet all of their growth targets each of the two years. And then on table two, you have an additional a hundred and eleven schools that are either in the process of correcting their data or might otherwise have invalid API growth data. And with respect to the second group, we are recommending that as we can apply the alternative criteria, we bring them to you at a future board meeting. And then with respect to the first group, we are recommending that a letter go from the superintendent to the governing board of each school that would direct them to hold a public hearing to just ensure that the members of the community are aware the school has not made adequate progress. And this would be very consistent. This is exactly what we did with the IIUSP schools when they failed to meet their growth targets after a year. So that's our recommendation.
Just want to tell us briefly the academic program survey they would be required to do?
Well, that wasn't, that wasn't part of our recommendation. We did, you all did discuss that. These schools are operating under a high-priority plan that already requires them to have state board adopted materials and four-six-six training and AB-75 training. That was built into the design of the high-priority program from the very beginning. If you wanted to go ahead and ask them to start a self-assessment on the academic program survey, it would add more dimensions. But the core of what's already on that survey is part of the high-priority program by design.
Sometimes it's a question of how it all fits together and if it's thought through, if there's enough team meetings and how to move forward together in terms of student achievement. So my impression with this agenda item is that the academic program survey would be asked of these districts that they would fill out and do and talk about.
We could go ahead and ask them to do it as a self-assessment, to show a system of improvement that they would be well-advised to seriously start on.
Right. These are decile-one schools. Am I not correct?
They are.
They need help and they need a little bit more prodding, I think, pushing in terms of thinking about what they need to do to help these kids. So I would strongly urge that be put in.
Okay.
Ruth?
What does invalid data refer to? And there are schools at the end that have it for two years running. What does that mean?
There are a number of reasons why they don't have a valid API growth figure. There could be testing irregularities, more, at least as common are on, are data corrections and they have a period of time right now to do data corrections. And those are two main reasons.
But to do it two years running, is that common? I mean, you've got a whole slew of schools here that have invalid data for, you know, two years. You've got about, I don't know.
I, I can ask staff here, what are some common reasons why they would have it two years in a row?
Jenny Singh from the Intervention Assistance Office. If a school doesn't have a valid growth API one year, they automatically don't get it the next year. So it is very common if they don't have a valid API growth one year that they don't have it the following year. Common, common reasons is that too many kids waived out, so they didn't have enough kids tested, things like that.
Okay, any other comments, questions? No? Okay. Motion to move staff recommendation? Wendy, did you have anything else to say on this?
No. With your clarify-
Rhodes wants to speak.
Right, with the clarification about the academic program survey.
Yes. And any public speakers on this item?
Mr. Rhodes would like to speak.
Okay.
And anybody else whose name I don't call.
Before we go forward then, okay. Please, Mr. Rose.
I just want to thank you for your question. That's a very, very important question that I think when you see the missing data or the stars, you need to ask why. Because I, what happens with a lot of these schools is they're very, very large, much larger than the average schools, but probably twenty, thirty, forty percent larger than, than the other schools and the other deciles. And that means they have more subgroups. And so just from a statistical standpoint, they're more likely to, to be, to fail in one of those subgroups or not have enough participation. And it's, it's good to look at that complete array of data when making judgments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. We need a motion to approve stack of recommendations with the inclusion of the academic survey, whatever the proper name is of that, academic program survey. Do you have a motion? Jonathan, second. Ruth, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Wendy. Okay, moving on. Item thirty, follow-up adoptions. Mr. Adams.
Good afternoon. You have before you the timeline for the follow-up adoptions scheduled for two thousand and five, and we're asking for your approval of this timeline. Just, we'd also like you to be aware that in a follow-up adoption, the reviewers we recruit are often those who have reviewed materials for us beforehand. But if we do not get enough of them, we will be looking, widening the pool, so to speak, and searching for other applicants. So just to make-
Tom, I imagine that's cost benefit to us at the state level because that training is expensive and bringing them all together and it's a, so if you, I mean, that's part of the rationale for that too, correct? Using people who have served before on these panels?
Right. If, if we have enough people who have never reviewed materials before, then we have to do a full-on training.
Right.
If we bring back people who are experienced, know the criteria, we can do an accelerated training.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Board comment? Questions? Okay. Do I have a motion? Janine, second. Suzanne, please help me out here, guys. Let's go. All those, all those in favor of this motion? Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And I think we need a ten-minute break. Is that all right to do it right about now? Thank you. Oh, Tom, I'm sorry, am I, am I stopping in the middle? Is it quick?
I hope so.
Okay. Oh.
It isn't out.
Oh, wait a minute, okay. Let's look at this one.
On thirty-one, you will have two speakers, so.
Yes, you know what? I think we need to break. Ten minutes. Thank you.